Okay, call to order our special city council workshop of May fifteenth. Item number two on our agenda is the discussion of the purchasing policy and procedures to include about eight bullet items here. Jesse, are you heading this up?
I am.
Okay.
We'll refer questions to Jesse.
Okay, alright. She'll take all the questions. Alright.
Some of the items that I didn't put in your packet, I put all the local charter and ordinances, but I thought I would just point back to state statutes and under title eleven, section ten sixteen, purchases and sales by city manager competitive bidding. It just at that statute level, it says the city manager shall contract for purchase and issue purchase authorization for all supplies, materials, and equipment, subject to regulations with the council may prescribe. We get to our charter, kind of says the same thing, it parallels the state. Ever contract or purchase exceeding an amount not to be established by council shall require the prior approval of council. So the council sets what amount staff can approve on the city council.
Twenty bucks. I'm just kidding.
And then the council may prescribe requirements and procedures for competitive bidding. One big takeaway is the council shall not exempt a particular contract purchase or sell from the requirement of competitive bidding. So once you establish a process, that has to be processed for all purchasing, you can't make an exception for this contract or this vendor. Once you set policies, it's policies and you have to follow them consistently. Next one is in title seventy-four, it's Oklahoma Central Purchasing Act. Exempt entities, kind of interesting, county government is exempt, but city government's Except as otherwise provided by the Central Purchasing Act, no state agency which would include us, shall make an acquisition for amount exceeding fifty to thousand dollars without going through the competitive bid proposals. Right now, the way our local ordinances are set up and policies, we are anything under twenty, over twenty-five thousand, so we're more conservative than the state statute. It says that you could, it has to be fifty thousand or more before competitive bidding process is required. So we're more conservative, so we're good to go there. Would point out, there are some exceptions in title sixty-one for consulting services, and consulting services defined for these purposes are architects, registered engineers, land surveyors, or other individuals or legal entities possessing specialized credentials and qualifications as may be needed to evaluate plan and design for any construction or public work improvement project. So architects, engineers, surveyors, you don't bid those out, you go through a selection In article J, section sixty-two of that same title, and the selection of a construction manager or consultant, all political subdivision of this state shall follow these procedures. Subdivision shall select a construction manager or consultant based on professional qualifications and technical experience of the construction manager or consultant. The subdivision shall negotiate a contract with the highest qualified construction manager or consultant, provided that a fee can be negotiated as fair and reasonable to both parties. In event a reasonable fee cannot be negotiated with selected construction manager or consultant, the subdivision may negotiate with other consultants in order of their qualifications.
Where are you reading from? Excuse me, I don't have that.
No, I didn't put the state statute in there. But just want to point out, if it's services or materials or supplies over fifty thousand by state statute, you have to bid. An exception to that is professional services for construction trade services like architects, engineer, and there is a process that doesn't include bidding to do that, because you do it based on qualifications and you negotiate with what you rank as the highest one. Then the last one that I was going to point out is title sixty-one, again, public competitive bidding for public works, and public works is any kind of building or road improvements, those type of things. There's a whole different section on doing that, and it requires bonding, again, fifty thousand is the limit, but it's a lot more involved than the Central Purchasing Act because of the construction trades. It tells you what, you know, how long you have to have in the paper, it tells you what has to be in the bid package to tell them about the project, and what your requirements are is providing insurance and performance and payment bonds and those kind of things. So that's what you go to. So it's all, not all in one place where you go to, and of course, state statutes supersede our charter and ordinances. Now, back to the things that's in your packet, the Guthrie Charter and ordinances, it almost mirrors what I read to you that's in title eleven for municipalities, and ten dash one one six, basically mirrors that, our charter. It almost word for word, again, big takeaway, once you establish a policy, you got to follow it for all of your purchases. You can't willy-nilly say, well, for this purchase, we're going to do it this way. Once you set it, that's the procedure you follow.
So that was my question, when we, what about on the state contract stuff, are you going to go over that? You might jump ahead of the game here, or is it?
A little bit.
Okay.
But the answer that, the way it's set up, if you purchase under state contract, it is considered by our charter and ordinance and the state is already being through the public bid process.
Correct.
So you don't have to rebid it.
Right.
To do that. Same thing if you, another town like Oklahoma City goes through a bid process, and you want to piggyback off of their process, as long as their process is consistent with yours, you can make a purchase off of a bid process they went through. So you don't have to go away, go through the bid process again.
So what if we wanted to keep it local and not go off of their bid process?
Okay, then we would have to put it out for bids, and unless we had a provision for a preference for local firms, we would have to take the lowest best bid. And the only way to deviate that is if you establish the policy that you will, for example, go three percent or four percent or five percent, whatever percent you set up, that you would go above an out-of-town bidder to award it to a in-town bidder. And you can't do that.
You can't do that?
You can't do that, but you have to adopt an ordinance.
Okay.
That way you do it. Right now, it's on your block.
That's not in ours.
No.
But we should look at doing that.
That's, that's the end of the discussion.
Okay. So I jumped right to the bottom line.
You did, you did. Again, our, we start with our charter in article seven on purchasing and bidding, and from there, we adopt a resolution two thousand eleven dash oh five that sets our purchasing policy. And then our purchasing policy sets forth the threshold for attaining quotes, if it's between fifteen hundred and twenty-five thousand respectively. And again, as you talked about, state bids, they are considered already going through the bid process, so you can take the low bidder through state. Competitive bidding for purchases up to fifteen hundred dollars, do not require competitive bidding, and may be purchased in the open market, however departments are encouraged to compare for competitive prices. Purchases between fifteen hundred and three thousand shall only be made after obtaining a minimum of three prices or quotes, and this is in exhibit A, which is our purchase of policy to that resolution, two thousand eleven dash oh five. If it's between three thousand and twenty-five thousand, it has to be three written price quotes, but it's not sealed bids. But then, once you get over twenty-five thousand.
Sealed bid.
You have to have solicitation of sealed bids or proposals and approval of the board by the city council. If it's under twenty-five, it can be approved at staff level, if it's over twenty-five, it has to come to city council and has to go through a formal bid process. Now, we're more conservative, if you looked at Edmonds and the states, it's, you can go to fifty thousand before you have to go to competitive bid process. We're not suggesting that necessarily, we're just making you aware. Professional services in our policy for architects, I would point out, in reading that, we may need to tweak that a little bit to match title sixty-one of the state statutes, because there's places that our policy may be a little dated, because we still have places in there where we're requiring quotes, prices, rather than negotiate after we pick the best for. So we may need to tweak that section a little bit. Our purchasing card policy and using city credit cards, what we call purchasing cards, it follows the same process and the same numbers as our regular purchasing policy. The city Edmund, I just pulled it to put in your packet to give you an example of one of the other cities, and then I included the Frankfurt, Kentucky ordinance that gives a local bidder's preference. So it's a sample, some questions that we would have would be, you know, before we started drafting an ordinance, is our governing body, the Guthrie City Council favorable to a local bidder preference? Some city councils are, some aren't. What percentage of preference is right for Guthrie? Three percent, five percent, center? Do we want to cap on the local bidder preference? Because if you say five percent, the higher it gets, the more that five percent is. One concern, if it's something that you can attain by state contract, they already know what the low bid's going to be, and if they want to play with it, they could always, if we did our own bidding, if they know that the low bidder on state contract was twenty thousand, well, they could add five percent to that still getting, even if they didn't even do it. That would be one concern that I would have.
Let me ask a quick question.
Yes.
Before we get too far down, the twenty-five thousand and over where it goes to a sealed bid?
Yes.
Okay, if we, as a council, change that ordinance and made it fifty thousand, like Edmund or Oklahoma City?
Yes.
Now it doesn't have to go to a sealed bid, but can we make that, that it still has to come through council?
Yes.
So we could change that to fifty thousand, no sealed bid, then it has to come through council, so therefore, we eliminate the state contract stuff if we're talking about, for example, buying vehicles and keeping it local, because then we don't have to worry about it.
You could get quotes instead of sealed bids, if you did that. But example, a twenty thousand dollar purchase, if you give five percent preference, then that's a thousand dollars, so the local guy could, local business could bid twenty-one thousand and get the project. If it's twenty-five, it's a thousand, two fifty. If it's fifty thousand, it's twenty-five hundred. So it fluctuates based on the amount for the bid plus what percentage you're giving them.
Well, the first thing that I was seeing was that if we put a cap or a local over-cap of, say, a percentage, it's always going to go to that percentage, regardless, it just will, I don't know.
But that's on the sealed bid deal. Without the sealed bid and it's up to fifty grand, that goes away, right?
Well, you still have to bet it competitively, you can't change, once you say you're going to give the local businesses a preference of three percent.
Okay.
Anytime they're within three percent of the low bid, and they're the only local vendor that bid it, then you would award it to them, given all other circumstances are the same, quality of product, those kind of things.
Is it a may or a will scenario? I mean, it's a will, so it's a mandate.
It's the way I interpret it.
Okay, is that right?
That's right, you're going to be paying more for every purchase that you buy.
Yep.
That's the downside to this deal is, are you the protector of the taxpayer's dollar, or are you here to protect the local vendor? And I must speak from the policy point of view, because I had to address this when I was in your seat as editor there, they came to us all the time wanting us to do this, we never did it. And then I went after Leroy and I talked about it, talked to the Edmund purchasing gal, I thought they might have changed, and she told me, no, every three years, they come to us and ask us if we want to do it, and I tell them, we shouldn't.
And there's more than one point of view in that, and we normally fire attorneys to get into policy, but.
Well, that was policy, that was pure policy, what I just told you.
State contract.
I appreciate that, yeah.
A two thousand nineteen Chevy twenty-five hundred crew cab truck, state contract is Hudeburg Fleet Services out of Oklahoma City. Rounded off, it's twenty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. John Vance, now this is a two thousand eighteen that they quoted.
Who, who quoted?
John Vance, but new truck, was thirty thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars. Nine hundred forty-seven dollars difference, which is three point two percent difference of price.
And one was a seventeen and one was an eighteen?
No, one eighteen and one nineteen.
One eighteen and one nineteen.
We just didn't follow up to get the price on the nineteen, because we were just trying to give you examples.
This is just an example.
Yeah. But the team, the way against what our city attorney said is, okay, yes, strictly looking at it, you're going to pay more with taxpayer dollars, but then look at this perspective. How many of our high school sports programs and stuff, do they contribute to special events? How much property taxes do they pay to taxing entities? So there's, there's some balance there. You know, if you favor a local entities, those are the entities that are doing business in your town, they're volunteering, they're timed to be on.
On everything, yeah.
Well, any kind of civic groups, chamber things, I mean, when they volunteer their time or their staff's time, that costs them money, they're not making sense. When they contribute to little league, or high school sports, or academic programs, or arts programs, every, everybody that raised funds goes to our local businesses. I doubt many of them drive down to Hudeburg and ask them for what I owed them. So, so there's a balance there. Yes, you're going to be spending more money, but should you do that to support people that are actively supporting your community?
Well, now let me get something clarified, okay, so we're conservative, but twenty-five thousand basically sealed bid, so we have to go with the state regardless of anything. If we bump that up to fifty thousand or whatever.
We have to go with the state, we have to go sealed bid.
We don't have to go with the state bid, we can bid it ourselves. We're not locked in to type the state contract.
But we would rather have quotes from people than getting sealed bids from things, and then we could actually make the determination with, because, say Vance is nine hundred dollars more than the other one.
You could either way, because it's your option, it's your option to purchase under the state contract, you don't have to. If you had a local preference, you could put it out for bid yourself, you could consider the state contract price as one of the bids.
Of bids, okay.
Compared to the other bids, but, but if you had a local preference and your local vendor was within whatever you set, three percent, five percent, then if the state contract was the low bid, it's just another bid, and you would give, if the local vendor was within whatever percentage you set, you could award it to the local vendor.
That's a slippery slope, it's a catch-twenty-two. I mean, I like, I prefer staying with a local vendor, anything we can, but then I don't like being locked into lowest bid either, where if we want to go with the local vendor, we couldn't.
Get what you pay for.
That, that three percent.
We have to go with lowest bid on everything anyway.
We did, other than, other than architecture.
So the three percent we'd add on there, it's going to, it's, again, it's, it's always going to be three or five, or however many percent.
Whatever it is, because that's.
They know that.
That's, that's public information.
They know that, exactly, so we're just going to have.
That's public information.
Unless you got more than one local vendor.
But I like the idea of staying.
Which we do.
Which we do, and I like the idea of having everybody on the same level playing field with no percentages, but if we're locked in, I could, I would.
What if we didn't use the state contract as a bid in this, in this particular scenario? Are you required to use the state contract as a bid? We didn't even factor them in the equation.
But why would you, why would you want to exclude it?
I don't know that you would, I'm just having conversations there.
Because it's, obviously it wouldn't be low, but that's what I'm just seeing, you got three percent, they're always going to do the three percent, I'd like to go with local vendors, but I still like, you know, I don't know, I want my take and eat it too. It, I'd like just a level playing field all the way across with no percentage hikes or that in there, but if that's what we have to have to go ahead and get a bid for a local vendor, which I would prefer, then I guess we are just, because then again, the dividends, just like you're saying, with a local vendor, they tend more to.
There's, there's two different schools of thoughts on how to look at this, and that's why you have a governing body that makes policy. And they have to weigh the advantages of the two things, you know? The one way we got it set up now, clearly you go get the lowest and best price out there, the other way, you're supporting people that support your community. So you'd have to have to have a balance there on. None of the money we pay at Hudeburg would come back.
Come back here very little.
None of Maygro.
It would, not even a cup of coffee.
Probably not.
Right, and I think that's the, part of the point, philosophically, I think everybody would agree, we want to support local businesses, clearly. But we also have, we also have a trust, a public trust, that the public is trusting us to make the best use of the resources that they give us, and.
But you do remember the police cars, the ten police cars, and you remember the uproar on social media about that we didn't keep that local.
Didn't get that local, yeah.
And it was a lot of uproar.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, where do you draw the line on it, you know?
Well, the line that's, that's being somewhat discussed here is the percentage.
Right.
I mean, that's the line.
And it could be set a max, you know, you could do three percent up to twenty-five thousand, or you could do five percent up to twenty-five thousand, or you could do three percent up to fifty thousand, I mean, so one's percentage and then the others, if you put a cap on it.
What do you think, Chris? On a public opinion?
I like to keep it local, if that's possible, but I think there should be a percentage there.
Some kind of sector anyway.
Obviously, it can't just be an open check.
And once you start, once you start this, I think, once you start this, I think it becomes somewhat of a slippery slope, wherever you set, set the percentage, because there will be continual pressure to increase that percentage, I would think. So that's, that's a challenge that we have too.
I've not seen, I've worked at towns that had a local bidder preference, and I've not seen pressure to change it.
I wouldn't know.
That may be the exception, but in a, in a few towns I've worked, I've not seen pressure to change it.
As a matter of fact, the council could actually pressure the vendor to get more realistic price lines, to keep it local.
It is, at that point, it's a price quote and not a sealed bid, if that's, then that's why I was thinking the twenty-five versus bumping it up to a higher number, so now we can go with open, open quotes instead of sealed bids, so we could actually go back and say, hey, you know, this is.
If you want to hear, you got to do it for this.
We got a negotiation.
Does the ordinance you're looking at apply, apply that to price quotes, or just to?
We, we would.
If you really open a slippery slope, if you do it on price quote.
Yes.
Because then it's not an open sealed bid process, you know, somebody's going to tell somebody else, this was, this was Vance's bid, and this was Cooper's bid.
Well, we don't share price quotes.
Well, I know.
Oh, it'll be out there.
In a perfect world, I know how things work, but.
Everybody knows.
But then my question was, does it apply to the quote situation, or just to the bid?
Well, we don't have to decide this tonight, I'd like we send local vendors in too to talk about it.
No, it's not a bad idea to, of course, I don't know what.
So the purpose tonight was twofold, to make sure that everybody understood the way our purchasing policies are set up, because we get questions about that from time to time, on how we structure it as far as when we get quotes, when we just get prices, when we get brick quotes, when we get sealed bids. That's all structured by the resolution that was adopted back in two thousand eleven. Our P cards, our purchase cards follow the same procedures, so we wanted to cover that. And number two, we wanted to talk about, you know, was there a interest in looking at a local bidder's preference, or?
And, and the procedures that we've all had access to, to read here, look real, look real positive to me, and they also look conservative. They look conservative compared to other cities, they look conservative compared to the state statute, and from my perspective, I think that's good, so.
We're looking after the city's money, or, you know, the people's money, and I think that that's something that we really have to look after. I still like the idea of looking after their money, but just buying local too, at any chance.
Well, I like the idea of upping it to fifty thousand dollars, as far as looking before a sealed, for a sealed bid, but that comes before the council.
I mean, really, I mean, inflation, everything is going up, and twenty-five is, even though that's, any more than twenty-five.
And I could especially see in Edmund's case, why they would go to the max allowed by state statute, the fifty, because with electric utility.
Oh, yeah.
There's many parts for electric utility that are clearly forty, fifty thousand dollars, and you'd have, it would be overcumbersome on getting some of their electric equipment from them.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Either way, though, I think we still maintain a certain control over what's going on, and if it's sealed bid at twenty-five thousand, or if it's sealed bid at fifty thousand, doesn't really matter, we're overseeing it in there.
Yeah.
Or the sealed bid process.
Honestly, from our point of view, from, actually from a contractor's point of view, it doesn't make any difference to me whether it's open quote or sealed bid, it is what it is.
And remember two things, one, it has to be budgeted before you can do it anyway, because if you don't, if it's not budgeted money, you can't go out and spend it anyway. And number two, even our small purchases, you see those ever, city council meeting in your packet is all our claims, so you can look at all of those if you want, and even the P cards, we attach something that shows who made that purchase, what it was for, and how much. So you can monitor even our small purchases by just looking at the claims report we put in here, it's in the packet.
A and P.
Yes.
Is it, is it another potential downside here, prospective bidders saying, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to bid on Guthrie, because they're just giving everything local, so I mean, why, why even, why even put in a number?
It could get to the point that the only comparative bid you have would be the state contract, other bidders will, and I've seen that where other bidders won't even.
Of course, that wouldn't be, that's not a bad benchmark, the state, but, but of course, you don't have that on every single item that we're putting out there for bid either.
Most of the big items you would have.
But I could see that as a potential downside too, that all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you're not getting five or seven bids, you're getting one or two, just because of, well, they're just going to give it local anyway. And so I think you have, I think we have to keep that in mind. Again, we need to be, we need to balance the trust that the public has put in us to best use the money, the resources that the city has to operate.
Clearly, there's two schools of thoughts on this, and I'm not sure that one is necessarily right and the other was wrong, it's just a philosophical position that is the policy that feels right for Guthrie and the city councils who makes that policy.
See, I think philosophically, I would be in favor of, of, of supporting local purchase, but, but even just like two percent. I, I wouldn't be, I certainly wouldn't be five percent. I don't know, it's tough to split that baby.
Well, I mean, and there's nothing that says, if I'm understanding everything, there's nothing that says we can leave the percentage alone and not do anything at all with that, and just up the fifty thousand dollars for sealed bid part, and then we have control on fifty thousand and less, what, where those go, and the rest of them are just low bid. No, because even if it's below what we have to get competitive bids for, we either have to get. No, because even if it's below what we have to get competitive bids for, we either have to get quotes or written quotes. Depending on what level. And we're still responsible without a local preference ordinance to go with the lowest investment.
It is the lowest investment regardless of who puts it.
In here, there is the language that if there is, if there's this, if these bids are the same, the tiebreaker goes local. Now, what the chances are.
That's not gonna happen.
But I did, there is language there.
Pretty rare for that to happen.
Yeah, that it is the first tiebreaker.
Tim, what do you think, you're local?
I'm here to serve you. Oh, that's politically correct. Yes.
I think keeping it local is good, but the two percent or three percent says, hey, we tried to keep it local, but you went over this threshold. There's nothing we can do, but we tried our best to keep it there, you just were two point four. And that's, that's why we put it there, because we have to be there for our.
Well, and it's just like when we buy our personal vehicles, I bought all of ours here except one, and I couldn't buy that one here because it went way above that mark. That was in two thousand, but it went way above, um, you know, so I had to buy it in El Reno in that particular case. But it was like five, six thousand less, so I'm gonna drive there for that. You know, if it's five or six hundred, I'm not gonna, and I have to.
And there's no need, because that five, six hundred, we taking up in time when you have to take it back in.
But five, six thousand's a bigger, totally different animal.
And, and, and we're, and we're dealing, obviously, the city's dealing with some big ticket items periodically. We've just gone through a bunch in the last twelve months.
And we'll have.
And there are some values we purchased that there is no local vendor.
Right.
Yeah, just where it would not apply.
Yeah, per, uh, per.
Yes, and some of the fire and ambulance equipment we bought is not provided by any local vendors.
I like what I see in our process, I like what I see in our thresholds personally. I guess I would like to see some attempt to give local preference, but something that we can, number one, control. And number two, isn't a very big percentage. Jim?
Well, if you're looking at fifty grand, two percent, you're looking at a grand. Simple as that. If you're looking at twenty-five grand, you're looking at five hundred bucks. So I would do it for that, I wouldn't do it for much more than that.
No, no.
Because again, then it gets into the, well, hell, I'll just go over here.
Yeah, and it will always be that percentage, no matter what.
So you're right on on that, Mr. Mayor, I think.
So what, what are you looking for from us, just this discussion?
Well, one, our, from a philo, philosophical policy standpoint, is our governing board, the city council supportive of looking at a local preference? Yes or no? What I'm hearing is yes.
Yeah.
Then secondly, you know, what percentage? And then thirdly, are we gonna cap it? Like, for example, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, then you're not gonna give the preference. The maximum preference, I guess, would be a thousand dollars.
Be two percent.
Two percent, up to fifty thousand.
Right.
And after that, the, the playing field is, is level again.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna take your big ticket items and it's gonna go back to multiple bids versus just one or two. If you're doing one truck, maybe, yeah, maybe a local Eskridge or Vance gets the deal. But if you're doing ten, maybe not, maybe so, maybe still so, but maybe not.
And I'd have to ask the city attorney, um, would this apply to, because construction jobs and supplies are different. Can you do one thing for construction jobs versus equipment?
No, I have to look into, I can't answer that right now as we sit here. Obviously, you don't know if there's local preference on construction.
I don't think there is.
I'm not sure that I've ever seen that, I've never researched it either.
That would open up the can a lot.
So this is just for purchasing, not for, for equipment and services, not for construction jobs. Is, is typically how I'm used to seeing it.
Most construction jobs are turnkey anyway, you hire.
Well, the construction jobs are gonna be more fifty grand.
Yeah, so it's right there, it's.
And local city of Guthrie, local.
Yeah, right.
Uh, some towns define it as, uh, within the county.
I think we ought to stay within our city limits.
Good.
I mean, if we're gonna do that, we need to stay in the city limits, if not, then let's just not do it.
I'm just making you aware.
Okay, all right. Uh, are, are we done with that part?
I think so.
How often do we use the, the GSA, federal GSA or the state purchasing contract?
We use them frequently for lots of things, okay?
Most cities do.
Okay.
Vault their equipment all day.
Good, good.
I don't know about the federal, but we use state contracts a lot.
Okay.
Well, it's usually the best price.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, they got volume.
Well, and on tractors and mowing equipment, all that, we don't have anybody lower for any of that anyway.
No, today.
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 I guess we do at Waterloo almost, but that's not where we are, that's just the other side.
And if you look at the ordinance from Frankfurt, they do city limits in.
I saw that.
And county USAs, they do.
Yeah, in that particular town. Obviously, it interests me, what, what do we do or is there anything that's been done in terms of construction contracts as well? I believe, I'm not familiar with whatever given.
I've never seen it.
Well, I have, I have seen it at the state level, when the state does.
For state.
Yeah, well, the state, it's statewide.
But we're only talking about equipment and supplies, we're not talking about construction.
I'm talking about the.
Oh, that's what you're.
Attorney's review.
Yeah, his question's on the construction. Okay.
Because if it came to that, we might have to pass the whole thing if you had to do it all. We, we, we might not wanna do that with the construction side.
Well, you can still cap it though.
They're gonna, well, a construction contract, I mean, if you do fifty thousand units, how many construction contracts do you have?
Yeah, that's very, very huge. When you start building or anything, roads are all gonna be a six figure at least.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion points?
So the way I take it, then you would like for us to maybe draft an ordinance around what the two percent up to fifty thousand local bidder's preference for your future consideration.
If you're gonna do, if you're gonna do that, you have to move, you have to redo an ordinance, going from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, yeah, bump it up, just, things are.
Change it, yeah.
That gives us more of a bargaining chip.
We will, we will draft an ordinance amendment along those lines for your consideration. It won't be at the next meeting because the city manager's gonna be on vacation.
He's on vacation.
I don't plan on writing this while I'm gone. I told staff that I won't get good cell phone service where I'm going either. Because when you turn your phone off, you don't get good service.
Sometimes you gotta.
Airplane load.
Yeah, likely story, likely so, right? Okay, we good?
I'm good.